Evening everyone, the time is six oh two. We're gonna convene this meeting of the Espinoza Council. This is the second regular meeting for the month of February. Would you all please join me in the pleasurable evenings?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for bringing us here this morning, Lord. Enlighten us to do your will, Lord, and bring the Holy Spirit upon every one of us to do the best will for our community of first citizens. We want to also take this time to recognize the passing of a very key individual in our community, and that's Miss Helen Murgich Finch. There are many of us in Espinola know Miss Helen Murgich Finch was a longtime community advocate, community booster, over at Curdy Gala, Santa Cruz Church. One of the original families of the Espinola Murgich family. They built the Yale Real Theater downtown, owned the Murgich Farm in Chifos. Mrs. Murgich passed away about two weeks ago, and a big loss to our community. And so we send our deepest condolences to the Finch family and the Murgiches. The passing of a big, big advocate for our community. Also want to take the time to recognize the passing of Miss Jackie Quintana from Hernandez. La Forty-Niner, as many of us knew her. Jackie Quintana comes from the well-known Bustos family up there in Hernandez. And Jackie is a very avid listener of our city council meetings and very active participant in our community. And she touched a lot of lives in our community. She passed away this past week as well. And all those that have experienced loss in our community, enlighten them and bring them peace and understanding during this time in the new year. In your heavenly name, amen. Members of the governing body, thank you for joining us this evening. Chief Garcia, would you please hold your role?
Mayor Proten, Peggy C. Martinez.
Honorable mayor.
Councillors. Erin J. Salasad.
Present.
And Nettie Rodriguez.
Present.
Just Ben Salasad Flores.
Present.
Oh, I think, see, you're a holly, bro. Is it just mirrors or quiet in your sleep?
No, we're all asleep in.
What'll happen?
I was gonna say, hey, do you guys want me to help? I didn't think you had a lot of coke or something.
I could use some coke.
Can they hear us? Can you hear us, councillors?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear anything earlier, but I can hear you guys. There's no video feed, but I can hear you.
Yeah, cameras not worth being here.
They get it, their means are now, so we don't need to be.
Jordi V. Odés. Denise D. Velvitas. Great timing, that was sneaky.
Counselor Jordi V. Odés.
Dennis Kins Salasad. Manuel J. Martinez.
I'm here.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, members of the governing body. Members of the governing body, you have the agenda before you this evening. We actually are asking for a few, um, switches. First off, we're going to ask to remove the department reports from tonight's agenda. That will very length the agenda in executive session. You should have received them all in the packet inventory. And so we're asking that you don't, we're not gonna have department reports this evening from the manager's report. We're asking for two executive sessions. One executive session immediately following public comment. It's gonna be, um, executive session to include the pursuant to section ten fifteen one H seven, the pending litigation, Riley et al. versus Espinola School District. And then, as well as, um, number one, pursuant to section ten fifteen one H eight, discussion of the purchase, acquisition, and disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. And so, we're asking that we go into executive session immediately following public comment to discuss those two items on the executive session agenda. And then we'll come back into general session. We'll conclude the action items proposed. And then we'll go back into executive session to handle the remainder of the executive session.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Mayor Proten, Peggy C. Martinez, second, my counsel, Justice Salasad Torres. Is there any discussion of this?
Under discussion, mayor, just for clarification, so that we're all in the same channel. Number one, and then number two, A, in the first executive session, the remainder of all the executive session advertised in the second executive session.
Correct.
So we.
And then the removal of department reports, which answers.
So we.
Is there any opposition? And the none, we're gonna approve the agenda as presented. Not public comment, Ms. Garcia, public comment is limited to two minutes. Do you decide what to say first?
Bethany Bradley.
Good evening. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know that today was National Spade Day. I don't know if y'all saw the line that they had over here of cars literally lined up. Brings tears to my eyes. Seventy-five animals today were now spayed, neutered, fully vaccinated. They actually had a backup back who pulled a van around and they were doing, uh, spays and neuters out of a van also, not just. So of course the shelter was closed for adoptions, but seventy-five animals in this town were fixed. I can't tell you, that's a little bit of really. Um, I did actually have a meeting with the manager at Walmart because, um, apparently security doesn't like doing their job over there, even though they're paid. Um, and then they had one guy who was made kind of aggressive, who sells, uh, baby puppy blue-nosed pit bulls every single, almost every single day out of his, the back end of his vehicle. And he got very obnoxious with, um, with the security guard. So I then proceeded to, uh, the chief and he sent some people over. And so now we now have them patrolling the parking lot, animal control. And every once in a while, they'll make a move through there because they're selling puppies, kittens, and you name it. Um, so yeah, so. And then I'd like to thank you guys. I've officially been here now four years. As of Saturday, I moved here to be an animal advocate for this town. And I think we're getting somewhere finally, so I can't thank you guys enough.
Grande Johnson.
Was that Grande Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, that's me. The microphone's up here, right, for everybody watching online? Okay. Um, so I don't know if you guys saw, but on the agenda for executive session, um, I'm talking more to the people than the councillors, um, because I think you guys already know what's going on. Uh, nobody wants to sue the city of Espinola, but they are refusing to obey the law on open records requests. And we've tried to give them every single opportunity, and this one's laughing. Peggy C. Martinez.
I'm not laughing, sir.
Um, so, we've given them every opportunity. Hey, point of order, councillor. Um, but we've tried to give them every opportunity to just obey the law, that's it. Nobody wants to litigate with them. They just want their open records. And they're trying to make a point out of just being a jerk to Steven because honestly, he's mouthy. That's it, that's all it comes down to. So they're gonna refuse to obey the law because he's mouthy. Uh, other thing is, after the meeting, I will be selling puppies and kittens unspayed and unneutered out of the back of my truck in the parking lot. Thank y'all. No, it's not funny, I mean, bring your money, bring your cash.
I'm Jacob Torres. Um, work with NASA and GoChili and space. I'm also the founder of Espinola's newest nonprofit, The Moon Chili Channel. Um, and I'm here in support of the, the mural project that's being proposed for you today. There's a group of artists and great people from the community, with students who want to do this great thing. So, uh, thank you for hearing them today and please consider funding them because they're great people and great things. Thank you for everything that you do, it was great to see you.
Juan Sanchez.
Again, second to the gentleman just said, as far as supporting the students who are gonna be named as mural workers, they've been doing quite a bit of work for quite some time. And so I think it's very beneficial, it would be good fun then, to be able to, you know, stay what they have to offer for this year.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, can you give me only one more call?
One hundred.
Juan, thank you. And lastly, Diego, I'm sorry, I can't tell the last name. They look like a little eejus, but don't they?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Uh, my name is Diego Lopez. Um, a long-time member of the community, artist, and, uh, member of a nonprofit world as well, um, director of Hamlet Culture, and, uh, president of the rear book council. And I am here just to support the project, um, within our business with visitors, artists and traveling mural. And just wanted to say that it's a wonderful project. Can't wait to learn more about it, hear more about it. And, uh, good opportunity for our youth and our local artists to be able to work together, showcasing the talents of the valley and celebrating that, uh, together. So, just wanted to say I'm in support of that and hope you all will support it as well. Thank you for your time. It's a, uh, it's a honor to be in front of you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Don't forget him next time.
That's it, man.
I didn't catch that, I apologize earlier. I wanted to see if the council would be okay with handling business with visitors before we go into executive session, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. All right, artist initiative for the traveling mural project from the O'Gorman Prophecy presented by federal, Brad Sandoval, executive director, Jorge Gonzalez, program director, Miss Finch, Cynthia Montini, co-program director, and Cruz Lopez, local artist. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
And so, guys, as mayor, uh, thank you very much, and members of the city councils. Good to see you. And so for those of you who are fellow Hornets like myself, or former Crusaders, or some devils, good to be here, thank you, Espinola. I'm the executive director for the National Latino Behavior Health Association. It's just a long name for an organization, it's committed to serving Latinos in New Mexico and across the country. Uh, as you know, I was born and raised northern New Mexico, raised in a little place called Iju, which many of you are very familiar with. Graduated from Espinola in nineteen seventy-three. My whole career has been serving the community. And I'm very proud to say that, uh, we have made positive strides, not only in New Mexico, but in most recent areas for another project called Connecting Our Voices. Uh, our job as an association is to be of service to the community. And I take great pride in committing my entire career in doing that. So as a retired public servant, now I work in a nonprofit organization. And I want to thank you for the work that the councils have done over the decades. You all have contributed to that in many ways. And as the current leadership, I thank you for the opportunity to present the work that we're doing with Connecting Our Voices. So the team is ready to kind of do a presentation. And thank you for members of the, the community who are here to express that support publicly because as you know, and so this image here is called Tuntos Podemos porque sabes que? We believe that one, we can do this together. And I want to thank you for the opportunity for being here today. So, mayor, members of the council, appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is Jorge Gonzalez, program director for Connecting Our Voices. For a great, thank you, Mayor Be Hill, help members, staff, and also the community. Thanks for being here, this is really an important moment. Thank you for this, giving your time and for serving as well. Um, just want to tell you a little bit about, we, uh, Chief Garcia made, put together a packet, and there's a little bit about the program in there. Uh, but what this project is, is, uh, it's a community and data-driven program. So it's bringing the community together, voices, right? All voices are important in the community. And so that's what this project does, it's bringing together a coalition of community members and the different sectors of the community. If you look at that middle page, it talks about how we involve everyone in the community. So everyone is represented at the table. That's what's important, right? Hearing community voice, that everyone is, is welcome at the table to hear their voice and how they contribute to this. So it's not just, no, this program, we're listening to what the community is telling us and how it drives the work, and what the data is telling us, right? What the health data tells us, that's what drives it. So it's a coalition, but part of our program is, it's an evidence-based program. So teaching young people skills that we don't always hear about, right? Social emotional learning, coping skills, those are the important things. Means it's evidence-based, it's been proven to work. And so we have MLUs with Espinola Public Schools and also La Cuesta District. So we're in those, we're in those schools and working with, with the students and presenting this program. Um, and also we have another part of our project is paid youth intern, right? Youth voice is important. And, and we tell young people, your voice is important. And we tell them, like, they hear this often, they're saying, you are the, you are the leaders of tomorrow. But what we say is like, no, that's not the truth. It's like, you're the leaders today.
Yes.
Right? You're the ones leading, right? And so that's how, that's how we, when we bring young people to the projects that we have, that's where, where it starts. And then we show how we value them by paying them. Switching the paradigm, right? Is paying young people, not just pieces of coke, right? It's just like, we value who you are, young people. And that's what this whole project is coming together about. I've been in prevention for twenty-four years, northern New Mexico throughout the state. I've seen, when, when Diego and I started back, 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 right? There were hundreds of people in our field. And now that is diminished because prevention funds have dried up. And now it's coming back, right? And so this is one of the ways that these opioid settlement funds, right? We're, we're giving it back to the community. Building capacity in community, community is driving this, right? And so this is a great opportunity. And so now we're seeing so much collaboration. You saw the people in the spoke here, there's others that were present. If you ever attend our meetings, I'll give a little part of that, every, it's the, the, uh, four Thursdays a month, right? And we have so many people, and we're building the capacity. We provide training for the people. We had one on how to engage youth, evidence-based programming. So we want the community to drive that work. We're providing these trainings for the community as well, right? So bring them, if you're able to make it to Connecting Our Voices, please do. We have virtually and in person every month.
Where is it up?
Uh, it's at the Lionel Foundation, up on the hill. And also sometimes at the Northern New York Planet, it varies. So, it, it varies, depending on, uh, when, when, spaces and everything. Thank you for that question, that's a great question. Um, but it's also bringing youth voices important, youth voice and participation. And this is an opportunity for that to happen even bigger. And not just for the artists, the young youth artists, but how are we gonna bring the rest of the community, and Cynthia talked about that in a moment. But it's building protective factors, but it's also like, culture is a protective factor. That's what we're teaching in schools, that's what that curriculum is about. Is it ties to the community is what, is, is a protective factor. And that's what this is, this is a huge part of that. So, um, and this is an opportunity for Espinola to set a precedent. There's a lot of opioid settlement funds. Or there, there, there are cities and municipalities who are not sure how to do that. You can be in the starlight, right? You can be in the spotlight, like, that's how it was done in Espinola. This is a great opportunity to show the rest of the community by leading them in that way. So, with that, I'll just let you take a look at this and see how this sector is represented and some of the history about the project as well. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, governing bodies, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I am Cynthia Montini, the co-program director for Connecting Our Voices. I'm Cynthia Montini, the co-program director for the National Latino Behavior Health Association, Connecting Our Voices. We are here this evening at the invitation of Chief Garcia. Uh, Chief Garcia is one of the members of our work group and, and also includes our fire department and various partners within the community. Um, Chief Garcia approached us about how to partner with the city of Espinola. Because as, as you can see in the brochures in that middle section, we try to include different aspects of our community, different members of our community. And of course, our governing body, we would love to involve you in what we're doing as a collective. Um, so the free, the traveling mural idea came about because the chief approached us wanting to engage in an artistic endeavor for youth, by youth. And that further developed into the traveling mural proposal that we're presenting tonight. The mural will be a freestanding hinge, three canvas painting. It'll be three panels mentoring age by four. Espinola is known for artistic, for its artistic prevention messages seen in its many murals, as Cruz has given you copies of them. We're known for our art. Cruz Lopez, our lead artist, born and raised in Espinola, is known for his artistry, local roots, and work in mentoring our youth. He has been tremendous in this mission, absolutely. One of the recent collaborative projects was the Lowrider Bike Club headed by Mr. Diego Lopez. And that, that show premiered at the Museum of Spanish Colonial Art. These lowrider bikes were designed by youth and are now on display at the museum through April twenty-seventh. And I'd like to thank Mayor Be Hill for being there when the show was premiered. It was wonderful to have the collective of our community there, and it was an absolutely beautiful turnout. With that in mind, we know that this traveling mural project can have a similar impact. In this project, Cruz will guide our youth in developing the vision of the mural. The theme will be prevention and resiliency, showcasing the youth's interpretation of the various protective factors that our culture and our community have to offer them. We know that these protective factors are important to keep them alive. We want them to survive long enough to become adults and become, um, committed members of our community, okay? So work on the mural will actually take place over the course of six months, where they will be needing approximately twelve hours a week, which would be three days a week, four hours a day. This will also give these youth somewhere to go over the summer, where they can engage with one another and engage with these wonderful adult mentors right here out of our community. Our coalition members will also be present as youth mentors, so that will include some of the folks that you see in the audience tonight. And then, our youth advisory council and our youth interns will simultaneously cover the creation of this mural through a social media promotional campaign. All youth involved will promote the positive coping mechanisms found in the artistic spirit of our community, while also highlighting its immense resiliency. Later, the mural will travel from school to school with a presentation on what life skills curriculum is about, what is prevention, and how does an entire group of community partners serve them. These partners, including our law enforcement and fire department members, will also help us tackle the stigma that currently exists against our law enforcement and first responders. Showing the youth that these are available resources to them as well. Because it is about putting on that united front for them and showing them that we are all here standing together for them. The mural will also be featured next year at Espinola Day in twenty twenty-five thanks to the support of Senator Leo Maramio. This project will serve as a promotional prevention tool for years to come. The impact to the youth is enormous. We are also providing them life skills in positive coping mechanisms, true community, and mentorships. As we all know, our mentors, they live, they work here in our community. We don't take our mentorships hats off at five P M. Because we see our youth at Walmart. We see them when we're out shopping, we see their families. We don't stop being mentors just because we're off the clock. The project timeline will be official launch in March, and we are hoping that the city will partner with us so that we can do an official launch event at the Misión Comento, where we will organize a press release for this launch. This will include all of our project partners and collaborators to appear together as a united front to speak on behalf of our youth in this beautiful project. May twenty-fourth would be the official start of the project, when our youth participants will actually begin developing the mural with Cruz. And then December, November twenty twenty-four is the estimated completion with our premiere of this traveling mural in December at the National Latino Behavior Health Association's Mariachi Christmas fundraiser. And that occurs at the Lenzic Theater in Santa Fe. So, the, what the youth, um, our interns and our youth advisory council will be working on promoting this project all the way through. They will also develop a short film that can premiere with the project, showing its inception, everyone involved, and how this really was a community collaborative. And this will give them the empowerment and the credit to say, we worked on this project, that's us right there. That's our interpretation of the positivity in our community. Then, later in December, we would hope to have this mural on display at the Misión Comento during our holiday season. We know a lot happens out there during the holidays here in Espinola, and the misión is a central point. And we would love to have that traveling mural on display there for our community members. Because we shouldn't always have to take our art and our work to Santa Fe for display. It can be displayed right here, okay? And then, in January twenty twenty-five, we will begin the mural tour. And that will start with Espinola Valley Schools. And Chief Garcia is invited to present with us, again, showing that united front for all of our students, where we'll explain to them what life skills are, what a prevention initiative is, what this enormous work group is, and what we're here to do for them. And we would absolutely welcome the city of Espinola's governing body into that work group. The mural can serve as a positive mobile prevention message for our youth over years. A work of art with a very needed and welcome message of resilience and positivity here in Espinola. And now it will turn it over to Cruz, who will explain a little more about what the actual mural is going to be about for the specifications.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cruz Lopez of the Trail of Life, living down here on the west side. I'm not sure if you guys have ever heard of me, I'm just gonna tap on it. I grew up with, with, both parents are artists, and they're, they're from Espinola. And again, as a Santero, he does good carving, and he loves weaving, beautiful weavings and paintings. So that's where I come from, you know, right? And I was lucky enough to grow up with people like that, that care about culture, care about teaching us how, how to paint art and make a living off of art. And I was so lucky to have my parents, lucky they're still alive. All my life, I've been trying to develop my talents and my skills. And I went to school for it, and I've done a lot of practice, and I painted some murals, and done a lot of sculptures. Um, so, so I got a good handle on the art, and that's, that's my thing. I, I know how to do it good. I've been lucky enough to get a, a few murals around town, and I should, should get some pictures of them. So, my thing, what I want to do is, is beautify Espinola with, with murals and sculptures. Hopefully, to grab some, some big sculptures out there in Espinola. But, um, you know, we, we're starting off as best we can with the, the resources we can. And, uh, I think it's a wonderful thing to be able to, uh, teach the youth as we go along, just like I was taught by my parents, um, to, uh, because there's, there's a, a place to start, and there's steps to go, and, um, procedures of doing it right. I see a lot of tagging around, you know what I mean? There's, there's been a lot of tagging, they tagged up Arnold's building, they, they tagged up a few walls around town. I mean, it's, it's really sad to see, but it, it seems like those youth or whoever's doing the tagging, who knows, who could it be? But, uh, I mean, if those, if those kids just had a, somebody to show them how to do it right, you know, maybe you'll be able to. they'll be able to create a piece of art that is really beautiful and meaningful, that they wouldn't have to paint over just with the same color as the wall, you know. If we could beautify this city, it could be a destination point, just like Santa Fe is, and Calis is, like we're right in the middle of Santa Fe and Calis. We could have Espanola as a place for people to come to and see the beautiful art, and know it, drive tourism, and it also creates amongst us, people from the valley, a sense of culture, and, you know, everybody's proud of the murals. So, and another thing that I wanted to do, which I've been thinking about a long time, I came, maybe a year or two ago, to the city council and set up one idea, but there's this one spot downtown on the, on the West Side. It used to be a video store, it was Smith's Video, and it's been abandoned for a long time. Mr. Smith, I think that he's an older man, he's going to be ninety in a couple of months. But I've been talking to him because I would love to open that case up, like kind of a little school, you know, to do murals, teach how to paint murals, how to do sculptures. So just today, I went through the paperwork and signed the lease, because before I could actually buy the building, I need to show two years of business, all business, so me and Mr. Smith would work together, so I clean up that building and start having that place as a gallery. And what we want to do is have a community gallery for friends that do art. And, you know, I don't know if you guys have been to the shows we put up, but every year we try to do, like a Day of the Dead show, and a few other shows are out throughout the year, but they're really successful. And we pack the cases every time, so I'm hoping that that case, we could turn it into a gallery, a little school to do murals and sculpture. We also teach three D printing now with the movie arts, and it's really cool because we get all the kids involved, we teach a lot of drawing, CAD, CADs afterward, and we teach a lot of sculptural paint, and they're really kept it up, you know, and I'm super proud of them. And so that's where I want to develop, and that space there on the West Side is, you know, more of that, just like movie arts is doing, to have something here in town that, you know, kids young and old, all ages, could bring their art and sell and make stuff. So if we could, I don't know, if you guys are interested in this project, this project would be a great way to start it off, because we could actually house it there and do it there, create it there. We could have the students wear the ones, help them, and teach them how to paint, how to draw, how to conceptualize an idea. And always I do my art fresh in the computer with Photoshop, so that I could give a talent or a picture that looks like it's them. So that mural, that's a picture, I give, you know, everything on the computer fresh, so I can make sure it looks like it first started. So that's what we would do with kids, is work with them on finding images that would speak to the topics that we're trying to cover, you know, of course, the prevention. But what I wouldn't want at all on this mural is any pictures of any kind of drugs or syringes or anything like that, just nothing but positive messages. Like, one of my ideas for an image there in the mural is actually my friend Jacob, who brought New Mexico Chili's into the space. You know, to me, that's somebody, a young person from the community that, like a loving young, and actually, you know, does something great that we could be proud of, so, you know, Jacob holding a chili. Stuff like that, you know, showing like the farming, las sequias, the positives that we have in this culture and in our valley that we can promote and share. So I think I talked to you, but you guys get the picture, if you guys have any questions for me, and we have good answers, and work with you, and so this project is really important.
I have one question. How many students is, are going to be engaged?
In the budget, it would be fifteen youth artists.
Fifteen, one five or?
One five, fifteen. And then four older youth, so our older teens would be assisting Cruz, so they would be the assistant artists, and then Cruz would be the lead. And we would hope to continue this promotion and maybe get additional funding so that we can expand the number of students that we can serve.
How are the fifteen students going to be chosen?
They will apply, and, you know, we haven't really gotten into the logistics of that, but in previous projects, it's been first come, first served. Sometimes getting our youth involved is kind of like her new hats, so that's why we want to launch in March and give ourselves two months to really promote it so that we can get the youth to come in.
I would really like to see the youth that are the most at risk have an opportunity. So I would like to see that be part of the rubric of how it's set up. I recently did something in Espanola Mentoring for Christmas, and it blew my mind how much of a need there is. Seriously blew my mind. And don't get me wrong, I've done this every year, every year I've seen a need, but the need has flipped, and it's very intense what is going on with the youth at this time, so...
Thank you, thank you for making that point, Counselor, and that's why we have a coalition exist, is that we are, when we meet, they make sure, they hold us to that, right? When we're meeting, it's like, who are you in the community, who's being involved in that? And those are conversations we have, so when we talk about who's driven, that's exactly what I think.
So something that I saw is the principal in that elementary is very in tune with every single student situation, as personal as it may be, or whatever it is. I was able to really capture information from her, not personal information, but telling me and sort of guiding me as to what students are needing and how she was pushing them towards me and pushing me towards them. And I really feel like it's important for you guys to engage with people like that, that really see it every day, that are in the frontline, that are dealing with these situations, because they know the particulars of some of the kids that are need most needed. And when you're talking about all this, I can picture one of them in my mind, to be honest with you.
If I may add to that, part of, one of the components in our program is the Families' Moving Forward curriculum, which is a life skills curriculum that we are currently providing to fifth and seventh graders. So we do see that actually ourselves, we see it one-on-one when we're teaching the children. We are right now at Carlos Vito Middle School, giving that curriculum to the entire seventh grade. We completed Pawake's, Pawake Middle School, seventh grade last semester, and we have also previously been at Chimal Elementary, teaching the fifth grade. And I'm happy to say that some of the fifth graders are now our seventh graders, so that's even more important, is that we are showing that consistency and stability, we're still here for them. And as I mentioned earlier, our mentorship hats off, don't come off at five.
Maybe just mine, Robert.
Counselor Benitez.
Thank you, Mary. I absolutely support and love this project. I met with Cynthia sometime back designing this project, and unfortunately I couldn't make the meeting yesterday, but I really would love to see this project move forward. And with that being said, I talked to Cynthia about hopefully the organization also taking on another project that I'm working on with Patries Village, and having some of the artists and the kids paint that entire wall. And also, we're planning a community garden, there is what Robert would like to see there, so it would be awesome to see the kids participate in another art project and as well in that community garden. So hopefully you can consider that project somewhere between this project and... And the other thing I would love to see, and I would love Mayor to approve, I would love to see a mural on that back wall in Council Chambers, because I think that would be the perfect place to just have a beautiful mural that showcases what Espanola is all about, and it's the perfect spot for it, so.
And thank you, Counselor Benitez, and that's part of why so many of our members are here this evening, to show you that we really are touching so many sectors. And one of the, Jacob, you know, we've talked to him previously about potentially having a gardening idea, because we know that that's a life skill that we can teach our youth, how to plant and grow culturally sustained and culturally appropriate crops that are, and make that sustainable, and that will add to the economic development of our community.
Also, and I think Robert's vision, who kind of runs the village piece of Patries, he has a vision that, you know, it can also help those that are recovering, that are currently at that facility, to have something to look forward to every day and to do, and think, you know, having some of the kids there is another part of it, right? And there's so much talent in this community that we just don't showcase. It's just sad, and really need to showcase it, and I love the idea of having some of the art displayed in the community. Thank you, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to say that looking at the brochure, and looking at all the partnerships, and this coalition that you've brought together is really impressive. Congratulations. That's, that's a tough thing to do, but it's something that we all need to work towards, so thank you for that. Cruz, I just wanted to say congratulations on beginning your vision, like that. I'm advocating for the IDD population, who is also a vulnerable population, so keep them in mind when you're up and running. I would love to collaborate with you and maybe engage our colleagues to do a lot of work as well. And I support this project, one hundred percent. It was a wonderful presentation. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the meeting yesterday, Chief Garcia reached out to you, but I am interested in supporting you and rolling up my sleeves and helping however I can. Thank you for giving that to our community.
Thank you. Let's do this. Here, my skin. Obviously, you guys have the right pieces to the puzzle in place. I mean, it's exciting, and to see all these familiar faces and everybody that's involved. I mean, there's no better way to tackle this and to help folks than you guys. You guys are the best. I'm glad that I know a lot of you personally. I always, I gotta say this, because first day I met, first time I met Cruz, he sold me my first car ever, and it was his first sales, first sale, and I bought a Chevy Cruze. So I took the Cruze on a cruise with Cruz. Obviously, the right people in place, and I pray that God bless you guys on this vision, and like I said, let's do it.
Counselor Manny.
Counselor Manny Martinez.
Thank you. I just want to thank you to get this guy for this project that they're doing. I was able to sit in a meeting with the chief and Cynthia, and it's an exciting project. I'm one that truly believe that if we really want to make a dent and an effort in combating this pandemic of drugs in our community, we need to start with the youth and never get them started on these drugs in the first place. That's the only way we're going to, prevention is the way to go to really make the good dent on what we can do to help prevent it. And these kids, there's so many kids growing up today with so many challenges in their life, that I can say, me, a friend that I had growing up in the seventies, the eighties, we didn't have a lot of the, of what these kids have to deal with. A lot of them are dealing with parents that are addicts, or parents that have passed away from drugs or alcohol themselves, and having to deal with these things, and Arty is a great outlet for expressing the way they deal, and I just want to thank you guys so much for doing this, because I think this is, this is a great effort into combating. Cruz and Diego, I've known these guys since they were born, again, it's been inside the family, we've known each other forever. They're behind me and his wife, are wonderful artists, their whole family, your uncle Leo is a fantastic artist himself. And so I thank you guys for being part of this effort and supporting it. I know it's going to be successful, because anything you guys touch, especially artistically, is successful, and that's going to be the success of our, of our youth. And I thank you guys for that so much. I just want you to know that as a representative of the Espanola Valley Arts Festival, please know that we are at the disposal, however we can help and assist in this project and plan. Thank you.
I wanted to say, you know, we're blessed here in our community, there's so much art and culture that comes out of this valley. I was blessed from a young age, my uncle Clyde used to take me to Spanish Colonial Arts Museum, Folk Art Museum, and all these pieces of art and murals and such throughout the state that are there at the museums, he's a part of the Guaybelles, Chimalo, Espanola Valley, and that comes from this valley. There's so much art, and it comes back thousands of years when the Rado peoples were doing the pottery of our valley, and it comes with the Spaniards and Santeros and such. What better family to do it with than the Lopez family? And so my uncle Clyde, as many of the Lopesses know, I mean, he grew up with your dad, Ben Amin, and your uncle Leroy, I mean, the house Diego lives in, they all lived in their senior year of high school, a lot of those murals that are in your house, Diego, were done by your uncle Leroy, your dad, and my uncle Clyde. And so our families are tied together, and what wonderful artists who've been and contribute to our community. It's so exciting to see this project and this initiative going forward. One of the big things and priorities for me is to look at building a cultural center for the placement of all these murals that we have throughout the valley. And I'm so excited to hear about your initiative, Cruz, about talking about a community gallery space, because we don't have a location here in our valley to showcase all the multiple art. You know, people go, and they go to each of the capillas, and we have beautiful capillas throughout our valley, and so a lot of them are locked. But people that come to the Espanola Valley, they miss out on all the art unless they go to the various galleries, and that makes it kind of hard, because we want a central place for them. So I've been committed to building a cultural center for our community, and what exciting to, we're able to make that dream come to fruition, to be right down the road with a community gallery, and hopefully you can do it like a cooperative and just invite other artists' businesses. And so, we actually, me and the city manager had a meeting the other day with someone from Department of Cultural Affairs, that we're really good, regarding getting startup business support for these individuals that want to do art, artist businesses, so we can get you the support that you need to do. So the new community development director, Mr. Mike Adams, is getting in touch with Mr. Lopez to get his joint book. But that's so important here for this valley and its commitment, its arts and culture, it's a good, positive attribute for this valley that needs to be showcased in the rest of the state. I'm excited about this, and especially because you tie in the whole valley, you tie in the whole valley, and what means and defines this community, and truly it is all. Does any other counsel have any questions this evening?
If I may just say in closing, thank you all so much for your time and consideration. Thank you all in the audience for attending and for being here to support this initiative. As you know, as you heard, this has far-reaching implications, it's not just our youth, but also our community. We have an opportunity to take an empty building and make something of it. And I'm just so proud of being here, standing with all of these wonderful people who have come from Peña Blanca and Albuquerque, because everybody's invested in this valley, and we love our youth and we want to see them thrive, so please take this into consideration, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Executive session. Notice is hereby given that the mayor and the governing body of the city of Espanola is not interested in executive session in accordance with the Mexico Community Act, pursuant to Section 10151 H8, discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the governing body. Two, pursuant to Section 10151 H7, discussion subject to attorney-client privilege pertaining to threat for paying litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant pending litigation, Riley &amp; Oliver versus Espanola School District. There is a motion made into executive session. Second, by Counselor Justice House Adorans. Ms. Garcia, is there discussion? Ms. Garcia, would you please hold your...
Your pro team, Pecito Martinez. In favor. Counselors Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor, Counselor.
Dennis Kim Salazar. Denise Lee DeRosa. Yannick J Martinez. Minetti Martinez. Erin J Salazar. Aaron J. Salazar.
That leads us by you, were you going to take off in my car? No, I can't find anywhere.
Let me know what I can do. Okay, all right, Cruz.
Yeah, probably.
They don't love the law.